Roll call please.
Mr. England.
Present.
Mr. Kessler.
Present.
Ms. Mills.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Present.
Mr. Turpin.
Present.
Special recognition, pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, I'm Tiffany Cooper, have the privilege of serving as principal at Owasso High School. We have two of our outstanding seniors who are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, Ms. Sailor Barnett and Mr. Aaron Lor. If we could also have the Owasso Jazz Choir under the direction of Ms. Mindy Bettridge come forward at this time, as they're going to lead us in the National Anthem after the pledge in honor of Veterans Day tomorrow.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, that was amazing. It's my honor to introduce these two outstanding seniors. It is such a privilege to be able to serve at the high school and see the contributions that are made daily by students. These are just two representatives. We have amazing students all throughout the high school who are involved in various activities. But when I was looking for students to come represent Owasso High School and talk to us this evening, these two came to mind. They have such a genuineness about them, they're RAMS through and through, and they have really left their mark on the high school. So I am excited to introduce to you Sailor Barnett and Aaron Lor.
Hi, my name is Sailor Barnett and I am a senior at Owasso High School. When Ms. Cooper asked me to share what it's like to be a senior, I said yes. I'm proud to represent the class of 2026 and this incredible school. I see so many familiar faces here tonight with my former, former and current administrators, even my preschool director, all of whom, along with my incredible parents, amazing educators, and my Lord and Savior Jesus, have shaped me into who I am today. Throughout high school, I have made it a goal to stay involved and make every moment count. I currently serve as senior publicist for Owasso Student Council, I am on senior board, I've been an athletic trainer for four years, I am a part of Dr. Coates Superintendent's Advisory Council, and now I'm a RAM Ambassador for the Owasso Education Foundation. Throughout it all, I have kept a 4.0 GPA while taking college classes, and I've stayed involved because I believe it makes a purpose. To answer Ms. Cooper's question, what's it like to be a senior? It's a mix of responsibility and gratitude. It's stepping up for others while being a great leader and appreciating how far we've come. Setting the example to the underclassmen, what it truly means to be a RAM. Laughing in the RAM Cafe with friends, seeing them in the hallway, and feeling the energy of a Friday night light is because we know this chapter is flying by. I want to take this opportunity to say thank you for building a district that believes in us but also helps us take that next step. I am proud to be an Owasso RAM and always will be.
Sailor, 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 are your parents here tonight? Do you have any special guests that you would like to introduce?
Yes ma'am, my mother and my father are over there.
Guys wave your hands, welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Lor and I'm a graduating senior here at Owasso High School. I often look back on my freshman year, walking onto this campus for the very first time was a nerve-wracking experience. I felt isolated and unsure of my choice, place, and what changed everything was the spirit of this community. I pushed past my shyness and started talking to people, eventually joining the wider array of clubs that Owasso High School offers. Becoming involved has defined my journey here specifically through serving as an officer in the student council, as president of the senior class, and as a fellow member of OKI, Owasso Kids Impacting Everyone. Owasso High School has shaped me in profound ways from the incredible warmth and welcome I felt as a freshman to the consistent dedicated support provided by our teachers and staff who are always ready to assist me. This school has truly been my home.
And Aaron, do you have a special guest here with you tonight as well?
Um, I wish, but my dad's at work and my mom's babysitting.
That's okay, we're recording this live stream so he can watch it when he gets home. Would you two please come to the front and take a picture with the board? Okay, thank you Sailor and Aaron. Item number three, special recognition, All-State Jazz Choir, Dr. Chris Parker.
Yeah, thank you for having me tonight. It's my honor not only to have the Jazz Choir here to sing the National Anthem for Veterans Day, but also to honor some students that made the Oklahoma Music Educators, actually this is Oklahoma Corps Director Association, All-State Jazz Choir. What is so unique, I know I say this every year, is that in band and choir, you don't compete in your class, you compete with every single school in the state, there's no classes. And they take 24 students for the All-State Jazz Choir, and we had seven make it, so 30% of the Jazz Choir are students. And since they're here, we're going to honor them tonight as I call your name, could you come up please? Michael Fleming, Teagan Miller, Ashton Mobley, Ella Powell, Paige Purfoy is not here tonight, Darcy Roberts, and Clara Smith.
All right, board members, please go to the front, let's take another picture.
While you are moving, I'm going to keep talking about something. First off, I want to recognize our most amazing teacher, Mindy Bettridge is back here, amazing work. Hey, school board members, stay there because we have a special surprise that came off the press like two hours ago. Two of these students just made the Southwest Regional National Jazz Choir. So we had, having one is rare, and we have two of them that made it, and that is Michael Fleming and Ella Powell. Congratulations. So, could we get a picture with them as well? With Ella? Thank you. Hello, Michael. This is the Southwest American Corps of Directors Association Jazz Choir. Thank you.
That is so awesome, thank you guys for being here and thank you for, for, well yeah, just being here and for singing for us. Congratulations to you on your accomplishments. Item number four, special recognition, our national merit semifinalists.
Good evening again, it's my privilege to recognize five outstanding students for their accomplishments. We do have five national merit semifinalists this year at Owasso High School, we are incredibly proud of each of them. They represent the top 1% in the nation, and they have done outstanding work, and so we're very thankful they're here tonight to recognize them. As I call your name, national merit semifinalists, if you'll come down to front, I'm going to read a bio and we'll pose for a picture. So first up, we have Ty Elias. Ty is the son of Trey and Tori Elias. He is captain of the Owasso Mock Trial Team and the Vice President of the National Honor Society. He's also a proud member of the Owasso Speech and Debate Team and enjoys writing for the Owasso Rampage. Ty plans to go to the University of Tulsa before attending law school. Congratulations to Ty. Next, we have Shawn Gunter. Shawn is the middle son of Sam and Amy Gunter. He is finalizing his work on his ascension to Eagle Scout for Troop 99, the culmination of over a decade of camping. Shawn is also a member of Odyssey of the Mind and attained fifth place at world finals. He plans to go to the University of Tulsa to earn a degree in one of the fields of science. Congratulations, Shawn. Next, we have Mallory Sepulveda. Mallory is the daughter of Marla and David C.P. Sepulveda. She is an avid member of the Owasso Choir, Owasso Theater, Troop 4722, and Odyssey of the Mind. Mallory plans to pursue a BFA in acting. Catch her before she's famous, and well, this was an old, she already is, did this play, it was amazing, on October 2nd. And so, congrats to Mallory. Next, we have Addison Welborn. Addison is the daughter of Brian and Melissa Welborn. She is the co-president of NHS and Volunteers Weekly at PetSmart and St. John Owasso. Addison is a member of Odyssey of the Mind and after high school, and after school in Hidden Figures OHS Book Club, and is a member of the Tapestry United Methodist Youth Group. She enjoys playing oboe and saxophone in The Pride of Owasso and the Tulsa People's Orchestra. Addison plans to attend the University of Tulsa and then medical school with the intention of becoming an ER doctor. Congratulations, Addison. Next, we have Austin Yow. Austin is the son of Amy and Alan Yow. During high school, he has been involved in soccer, band, and National Honor Society. After graduation, Austin plans to attend the University of Tulsa and major in biochemistry. He would like to thank Sony Hirsch, Daniel Fisher, and Maxwell Shuck for their support throughout high school. Congratulations, Austin. Thank you again to our national merit semifinalists for being here, we're extremely proud of your hard work and dedication. Thank you so much, congrats again.
And I'm going off script just a little bit here because it's Veterans Day tomorrow, and we had the choir here singing, and we probably should have had this on the agenda, but we didn't. If you served in the military, would you please stand up so that you can be recognized tonight? Thank you for your service, thank you. Uh, yes, that concludes our special recognition, and you are free to go right now if you would like, and scoot out before all of the reports to the board and the board meeting, or you are more than welcome to stay in here for the whole board meeting. Yes, thank you so much for being here tonight. Okay, item number five, reports to the board. Dr. Margaret Coates?
Yes, thank you. Wow, what a great way to start this November board meeting. Loved all the excitement and recognition, we have such amazing students, listening to all of their accomplishments, I was like, man, I'm exhausted just hearing all the things that they're involved in, so exciting, so incredible. So, I'll start with my report, it's not going to be as exciting as what we've just heard, but, fall accreditation, we had our visit from our regional accreditation officer, and we passed with flying colors this fall accreditation, and thanks to Dr. Baker and the technology team for that, all of their support and work with this. It's new for Dr. Baker, and so she did a great job on round number one. We had our OHS, our High School College and Career Fair a couple of weeks ago, and we had over 60 vendors, colleges, and other employers from the community at the College and Career Fair, and just such great engagement and such a neat thing for our students to participate in. This is an announcement that we will be pushing out to all of our parents within the next few weeks, couple of weeks, right before winter break, but we are going to change our drop-off times at our elementary sites. Right now, the drop-off time is at 8:45, the school's starting at 9 o'clock. We are going to actually open our doors a little bit earlier, starting in January, we're going to open at 8:30, we did that before COVID, and we're going to go back to that. We want to make sure that we allow plenty of time for our parents to be able to drop off at multiple sites, especially with the 5th grade elementary center coming within the next couple of years. We also want our students to be able to enjoy breakfast in the morning, have a little bit more time for that, and then this will also help with our transportation and busing in the morning. So, you will see those announcements coming, but it doesn't start until January. Also, exciting news, we are going to go ahead and start Elementary Art as a special for next school year. We had intended originally to wait until the 5th grade elementary center was built, but we have figured out a way to go ahead and get it going next year. We found a space, a classroom at every elementary school site, and so this summer, we'll spend time repurposing those schools, or getting those classrooms ready, the, you know, ripping out carpet and getting the floors ready and all the furniture there, and excited about this because this will have a direct impact on every single elementary student in the district. And so, some of those sites, some of our bigger sites like Morrow and Stone Canyon, who have bigger class sizes, this will help with specials, because now we'll have four specials instead of three, and so those class sizes and those specials will go down. So, it's good news all the way around for everyone. And then, you might want to mark your calendars, and I've talked about this a tiny bit, but the OSSBA is going to do a virtual town hall on Wednesday of this week from 10:30 to 11:30, and if you can fit it into your schedule, and Renee can help you register, so you can let her know if you want to register for this, but this town hall is going to feature our new State Superintendent, Lyndell Field. So it'll be an opportunity to hear our new State Superintendent talk about his goals for the next 15 months. Again, if you want to register, Renee can help you with that. We have Veterans Day's assemblies all over the district this week, with probably the biggest one going to be tomorrow at the high school at 10:15, if you'd like to attend, you're welcome to attend that one. And then, in front of you at your seat, you have a CSI climate survey, and I just want to go over that just briefly. I won't go over it in a lot of detail, it's color-coded so that you can just quickly see that from column three to column four, you can see that everything in green means those questions, the perception of the data has improved. So, we ask, there were, looks like 59 questions for the teacher survey, we had a 50% response rate, and if you look over in the question column, you see one that's highlighted in dark green. That's one of our goals this year, is our school environment and our facilities, and making sure that they're well-maintained and kept up to date and in good condition, and so we really want to focus on that. So from the last time we gave the survey to this time, there was 11% increase in that perception of the buildings being taken care of. So good job to District Services and Brad and his team for working hard on that. The items, the questions that are highlighted in yellow, these are the ones, the metrics that we're always looking at regarding safety. So you can see that I feel safe outside on the school grounds, that has gone up, students are safe in this school, that has increased. And then down at the bottom, at this school, it is common for students to tease and insult one another. That number dropped from 39% to 30%, going down in that area is actually a good thing. And then, I wanted to point out, this question 44, the school consistently enforces the code of conduct. This is a teacher's perception, and it went up 19%. So what that tells us is that teachers feel supported by their administrators, and that the code of conduct is consistently being enforced. So, good, good things there. Next page is our support personnel, and with the support personnel, we didn't get a really that great of a response rate, we only had 60 people fill this out, so it was really only 10%. But of those 10% that completed this survey, you can see that at the top there, that dark green, that goal for this year of keeping our schools in good condition, that had a 9% increase. You can see that the safety metrics all had positive outcomes. Those items that are highlighted in red are the items that have gone down, and so that tells us those are maybe areas that we need to focus on. And then, if you turn to the parents page, page three, we had 508 parents complete this survey. Again, that dark green at the top, talking about the school environment being clean and in good condition, that has gone up. The safety metrics are also positive, those are the ones highlighted in yellow. And then, those three areas that are kind of a darker green in that last column, school assignments are meaningful and thought-provoking and encourage creative thinking, that's parents' perception, that's gone up 5%. Students respect their teachers, that has improved, and the rules, again, of student conduct are consistently enforced at my child's school, that's gone up. So that tells us that parents believe that administrators are supporting teachers in school behavior. And then finally, the last page is regarding our students, our students' perception, and we had an amazing response rate, 62% of our students completed this survey. And so, again, just we'll highlight the areas in that dark green on the questions, the question is when something is broken at my school, it is fixed quickly, and my school is kept clean, those both improved. The one, the question that's when something is broken at my school, it's fixed quickly, that improved by 12%. And so students also have the perception that their school is being taken care of, and things are getting, and the school's clean, and things are getting fixed. The safety metrics, the ones in the bright yellow, those have all increased. And then, down at the bottom, question 37 and question 39, those two are also improved dramatically. So question 37, most students in my school treat each other well, that improved by 10%. So students feel like everybody's getting along and treating each other kindly. And then, question 39, most students in my school care about each other, that also improved by 10%. So, all in all, a very positive outcome on this survey. We will take some of these questions and issue the survey again in the spring, just to make sure we are trending, continuing to trend in that positive direction. So if you have questions on this, we can talk about that, talk about it later, I don't want to go into any more detail with that, but certainly willing to visit with you guys if you have questions about that. And then, also at your seat, you have a newsletter, and this newsletter will come out on Friday, we're going to be publishing this once a quarter, and Jordan has done a great job highlighting and putting together all of the positive things, or many of the positive things happening in our district, and so we wanted to have just kind of one place that we can send, put, create a newsletter, and we will email this to parents, and we will text this to parents and staff, and this way, for those people that don't get on social media very much, they'll be able to still see all the positive things happening in school. And then finally, just scheduling things, athletics, our girls, or just some things that you probably are already aware of, our girls cross-country, we're state runner-up with our Ava Cornelius earning state championship, she won the state championship as an individual, and she set a new state record running the 5K in 17.06 seconds. That is really fast, really, really fast. And Lilith Johnson, she received third place individually, and I'm not sure And Lilith Johnson, she received third place individually, and I'm not sure what her time was, but we have our top two runners placing in the top three. So congratulations to those two young ladies. And then we were, we are football district champs, and then we played UConn last Friday night, and we have a bye this week, and we'll have a playoff game on the twenty-first, and the playoff game will be between either UConn, the winner of UConn and Deer Creek. So we may be facing Union again, we'll see. And then basketball scrimmages are off and running, and we have a swim meet this week. And then Cheer and Palm, Cheer won Game Day Regionals, and their state championship for Game Day will be this Friday, so they have a chance for their second state championship, and I think that's it for them. And Palm will also be competing at the state championship. They got fourth at regionals. And then finally, OEF, Owasso Education Foundation, their night at Canes is this Saturday. It was a blast last year, so hopefully everybody's got a ticket, and we'll be there on Saturday night. Should be lots of fun, and then we'll have Grant Patrol on the twentieth, right before we leave for Thanksgiving break. So that's it for my report. Do you guys have any questions? Right, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Coats. Item B, Teaching and Learning, Mr. Mark Officer.
Good evening, good to see you guys. Collaboration Day was great, lots of positive feedback again from teachers and principals. PD Day was fantastic, and our Veterans Day assemblies coming up tomorrow are going to be exceptional, I have confidence. If you guys would like to schedule for those Veteran Day assemblies, let me know, and I can share that with you, so you can attend one or two of them if it's possible. We did have some last week, actually, Hotson had their Veteran Days, Veterans Day assemblies last week, but most of the sites have them tomorrow, so. Special Services had a busy, has some busy times coming up for Special Olympics on November thirteenth, and also the Transition Team attended a Training Institute, including Ms. Duncan and on November twelfth, or Willa Ten, I'm sorry. She went to a different conference this last week. Will attended the Training Transition Institute on November twelfth and thirteenth here in Owasso. Fine Arts, the hits just keep on coming. Chris highlighted a lot at the beginning of the meeting, but Pride of Owasso completed the season with second place in the state marching contest, which is just exceptional, and Chris could give more detail, but we're really excited about the score they achieved. They're in earning second place. Forty-two choir students passed onto the second round of All-State Auditions. The band program had a hundred and thirty-eight students make all district, which is almost half the seats, as you can see, and a hundred and eleven were passed on to the second round for All-State Auditions. And then though the OHS Theater Department did not place in state in the one act, we did have one actress, Natalie Sheffield, named to the All-State Cast, so a great month for Fine Arts as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Officer. Item C, District Services, Mr. Kerwin Kerner.
Good evening. I love this time of year, the leaves start to turn colors, the weather cools off enough to wear a hoodie to a football game without sweating, and we get to honor our veterans. So some of our schools have already done their Veterans Day assemblies, most will be tomorrow, like others have mentioned. I know we have some veterans in the room, so we hadn't stand a while ago. I wouldn't want to do that, by the way, but you're welcome, because I didn't. The, I won't, I won't, I won't call you out, but I do, I would like to thank all of those veterans for their service to this great nation. We live in the greatest country in the world, and we know that our freedom is not free, and so the service that this country, the service to this country by our veterans is much appreciated. Quick update on our roofing projects that are ongoing. A-TOR and Seventh Grade are still in progress. A-TOR is dried in, so they are still working around the outer edges on the, basically the cap, and so then they will finish that and put rock back up on top. Seventh Grade is kind of all over the place. There's two hallways that still are not fully dried in, but they're not classrooms. There's, they connect the, around that courtyard, so they'll get to those, they're working on it, but at least those aren't the, like, in classrooms and the most important areas there. So hoping that both of those get wrapped up by the end of the year. We have some nicer weather coming up this week, so they can get right back to it and continue to work. So those are ongoing. The roof of the Operations Transportation Building is done, and so they did that one pretty quick, which was good. I've got another report coming up in just a second, so I'll say that's all for now. Thank you for serving Owasso Public Schools, and go Rams.
All right, moving on to item D, Continuous Strategic Improvement, CSI Goal Area Number Four, Ram Resources, Mr. Kerwin Kerner.
All right, so Jordan threw up our scoreboard up there for Goal Area Number Four. Initiative One, Student Leadership, Student-Led Clubs and Character Education Programs. We continue to provide as many opportunities as we can for students. That was showcased here earlier tonight. You heard two of our high school students talk about being involved, and it's great to see that our students have those opportunities. We continue to have the opportunity to create more clubs as students come forward, and they can find a sponsor, a staff member to sponsor the program or the club, then that's always looked at. So there's always more opportunities even beyond what we have now. So proud of our schools for trying to make sure that all students have a place to fit in more than just the classroom. We know that's important, and our students have those opportunities. Objective Number Two, Facilities Improvement Plan, Technology Improvement Plan, and Transportation Improvement Plan, all those kind of go together, and with the passage of the bond, they're at the forefront once again. We're always looking at what are those next improvement areas that we need to work on, especially with our facilities. We're constantly looking at those. Most of that's spelled out in our bond of what we're doing next. And then also just the general maintenance, we are on life cycles as much as we can, so that's a continuing thing. Same with technology. Dr. Baker and her team, they have refresh plans for a lot of our equipment and things of that nature, as well as Mr. Oliver and our buses. We've done an extensive maintenance program on our buses this summer, and he was kind of telling me about it a while ago, as far as we've probably got more buses actually running and fully functional than we have had in a while. It's, it's, it's hard to get maintenance on our buses sometimes, and so he and Mr. Haley have done a great job of prioritizing our bus fleet this summer and getting that, getting that up to speed there. So as Dr. Coats also mentioned, some of the survey data regarding the cleanliness of our schools and getting things fixed on time is improving, always something we want to continue to work on. So kudos to Mr. Yocle and his team. He's got, he's got really good workers that try really hard and take pride in what they do, and so we appreciate that. We know that it's a continuing effort to do that. The more that we grow and the square footage that we have, we know we're going to have to invest in additional resources and people to keep all those things clean, but I am proud that they're making a difference just in what we've got already. So real proud of their efforts there. That's all I've got for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerner. Item Six, Comments from the Public Regarding Agenda Items.
There are none.
Item Seven, Consent Agenda, Board to Consider and Take Possible Action on the Following Consent Agenda Items.
Yes, thank you. I would ask for your approval on the consent agenda items as listed.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items seven A through seven F1 as proposed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler. Mr. England.
Yes.
Okay, item Eight, Teaching and Learning, Mr. Mark Officer.
Did you want to go ahead and, do you want to read it first? I'm sorry, was it short?
A, Board to Consider and Take Possible Action on the Proposed Edits, Changes, and Additions to Policy Number 1.61 as outlined in the attachment. Thank you.
Yes, we're just asking you to, these are the annual edits again for the Wellness Committee, the Wellness Policy. We brought first reading to you last month from that committee, and so we're asking you to approve those edits, please.
I move we vote to approve proposed edits, changes, and additions to Policy Number 1.61 as outlined in the attachment.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Okay, item B, Board to Consider and Take Possible Action on the Memorandum of Understanding with Missouri State University for Practicum Student/Teacher Internships for the 2025-2026 school year at a cost of zero dollars as outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the MOU.
Yeah, just excited that another university wants to bring intern teachers our way, give us a chance to meet them first and keep them on the team if they're Owasso quality, so.
Make a motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with Missouri State University for the Practicum Student/Teacher Internships for the 2025-2026 school year at a cost of zero dollars as outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the MOU.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Officer. Item Number Nine, District Services, A, Board to Consider and Take Possible Action on the Proposed Edits, Changes, and Additions to Policy Number 5.01 as outlined in the attachment.
Okay, yeah, these, these next two, they came about from our Fall Accreditation Audit with our RAO, and so he pointed out a couple of minor wording changes that we wanted to clean up in our policy. The first one in Policy 5.01, which is medicine to students specifically down in the epinephrine, the EpiPen section, we're changing three numbers and four words. It's part of our practice that we call nine-one-one and the student's guardian if we have to administer an EpiPen, but in our policy, it just says that we would call EMS services, and we need to have nine-one-one in there instead of just EMS services. So we added nine-one-one in front of the EMS services and the student's guardian in there as well. It was in our handbook, but it wasn't in policy right there, so we wanted to make sure we got those words added as well. So easy, quick change, so that's why we didn't bring it as a first read, so we'd ask that you make, approve those amendments to 5.01.
I move we vote to approve the proposed edits, changes, and additions to Policy 5.01 as outlined in the attachment.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
All right, item B, Board to Consider and Take Possible Action on the Proposed Edits, Changes, and Additions to Policy Number 1.04 as outlined in the attachment.
Okay, this one is in regards to reporting child abuse and neglect, and so in our policy, it's always been that we report any suspected child abuse to DHS as well as local law enforcement. It's in there stated for any student under the age of eighteen. And so again, through our accreditation, we needed to have in there a clause that says if you are over eighteen, that we will contact local law enforcement, but not DHS. So we just added the phrase in there, any district employee having reasonable cause to believe that any student over the age of eighteen is suffering from victim abuse, neglect, or exploitation, shall immediately report this matter to local law enforcement. So just breaking out a separate clause for any student that is over eighteen. So we would ask that you approve the amendments to 1.04.
Would it be possible to clean up the grammar in that a little bit? It says years is suffering from a victim of abuse. Take out the A, suffering is a. Take out victim. We'll clean that up. Suffering from.
You can clean it up, and it doesn't change the.
If you just make a motion on how you, just that, that we will double-check with you before we post it.
Suffering from. We'll take out the words A and victim. If we take that out, suffering from. A, victim of, take that, take that out. Eighteen years, over eighteen years of suffering from abuse, neglect, or exploitation.
Or we switch those two around. Eighteen years is a victim, suffering from abuse. We can wordsmith it. It's just, yeah, and get it right.
Okay. Then I make a motion to approve the edits with the edits. The policy 1.04 as outlined in the attachment.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Thank you, and we'll clean up the verbiage from the math guy here.
Good catch. Okay, item Ten, Finance, Mr. Philip Storm. Board to Consider and Take Possible Action on the Treasurers Report for October 2025.
Thank you. So this is the time of the year when our expenditures will outpace our revenue by quite a bit, and that number will probably be greater next month until some of our revenue sources that don't really start until mid-year start to kick in in January. So as you can see from this report, in the general fund, our expenses are about three and a half million more than our revenue, and that, again, is not uncommon. Last year's numbers were fairly similar. Revenue sources are ahead of last year with the exception of state revenue, and federal revenue is pretty close. And as we've discussed in previous meetings, the reason why state revenue was a little behind is, can be traced back to one source, and that is textbook line item funding. That's six hundred and some odd thousand dollars, and last year that was paid to us in one lump sum in August. This year, it's being paid to us in monthly installments. So this year, we've only gotten three monthly installments of that to this point, so that's the reason why we're a good four hundred thousand and more, more than the four hundred and sixty-eight thousand behind in that one source, which is the sole reason why our state revenue is behind last year's pace. But all of this tells me that we're, we're pretty close to where we expect to be at this time of the year. And the building fund, similar situation. The building fund has relatively no revenue up to this point in the year, and of course, some fairly extensive expenses, so you can see about two-point-nine million in expenses and only seventy-six thousand in revenue. Again, that's not uncommon, because the building fund's two sources of revenue, avalanche taxes, which don't really begin coming until January, and the Red Bud funding, which also begins coming in at mid-year. So again, it explains the reason why we need a good, healthy fund balance in both of those funds to get through the first half of the year. Child Nutrition Fund is a little bit ahead of last year's pace in revenue, and expenditures are actually slightly behind last year's pace, so still looking good in that, that fund as well.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the treasures report for October twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Item B, board to consider and take possible action on the proposed adjustments to the substitute pay for the remainder of the 2025-2026 school year.
So one of our CSI goals is to increase the fill rate for teacher absences. So in looking at that, we would like to propose to you kind of a targeted adjustment for, for Fridays. So as we look at the data, Fridays tend to be the worst fill rate, in other words, the most absences that are not filled by a substitute. So what we are proposing is, I feel like, a fairly significant increase for substitutes that fill an absence on a Friday. So this would represent a fifty-five dollar per day increase for, for those who fill on a Friday. So currently, it's eighty-five dollars for a non-certified substitute and ninety-five for a certified substitute. So what we're proposing is a hundred and forty for the non-certified sub and a hundred and fifty for certified sub for the remainder of the year. And we want to try this and see if it is going to make a difference. If it doesn't make a difference, it might not be something we want to continue in future years. But we'd like to try this targeted, targeted dosage, if you will, and see if it can make a difference in our substitute fill rate for the remainder of this year. Yes, sir. Glad you asked. So if nothing changed, and if we continue with the same fill rate on Fridays as we currently have, then the only people that would be getting more money would be the ones that are already substituting on Friday. So if that were to happen, our potential increase would be about sixty-one thousand dollars. If we were completely successful, and we had a hundred percent fill rate on Fridays, that number goes up to about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So it's a fairly significant investment to try to address the fill rate on, on those days. I'm not sure if I can answer that question. It's theoretical. It's just kind of the pay rate that we've had historically. Yes. I don't know if a district is doing something exactly like this, a specific rate on a specific day of the week. So I, if there are, I'm not aware of it.
We do know districts around us are paying more than the ninety-five and eighty-five. So we, we may consider doing an overall increase maybe next year for the, for the certified and non-certified, but we wanted to try this first, just because the data shows that we have enough subs, but our subs are not taking jobs on Fridays. And so we just thought this, we wanted to have a rate that would be high enough to incentivize the subs to take the job on Friday. Renee just leaned over and said she may start taking sub jobs on Friday.
Well, I was gonna say too, that even if we don't, if it doesn't work, I don't know, I'm sure we'll go back to the drawing board, but I mean, it might be a good way to show our appreciation to those who already are subbing on those days. Can't imagine them getting that increase and then, like, pulling it out from under them also. So thanks for thinking outside the box and being creative with trying to fill those positions. I, there is a law, right, about salaried, like, certified staff, you can't, you can't give them an increase and then decrease. Is that correct? Is it the same with an hourly or a daily rate employee?
Well, you're referring to, yes, there is a law that says that an employee's salary can't be decreased without a significant change in their duties, but that, I believe that only applies to full-time, full-time employees, so it wouldn't apply in this situation. Yes.
Okay.
Renee, would you be certified or non-certified?
I think that's confidential, Frosty.
I didn't expect her to answer it.
Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I move we vote to approve the adjustments to the substitute pay for the remainder of the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
And Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Storm. Item eleven, human resources, Ms. Lisa Johnson.
Good evening. Going back to the substitute assignments, regularly employed employees cannot also serve as substitute teachers. So while this line item or this agenda item, turnover and exit survey data report is the smallest agenda item, it's probably really going to take the most time this evening. I want to be thorough, but I also want to get through this data relatively quickly. I can be available for questions afterwards if you have them. If you want to have time to digest this data, feel free to, and then reach out to me for any clarification. We are going to get started with the employee turnover summary. You all have in front of you microscopic data on this spreadsheet with turnover information from fiscal year twenty through fiscal year twenty-five. We're presenting this so that you can see not only fiscal year twenty-five, but year-over-year information. For fiscal year twenty-five, the district's overall turnover rate was thirteen point four-nine percent compared to twelve point eight-four percent in fiscal year twenty-four. This information can be found at the bottom right corner of the spreadsheet. Despite a modest increase, this rate remains well below the statewide trends and reflects continued organizational stability. Looking at school site turnover specifically, turnover for fiscal year twenty-five was twelve point five-one percent, up slightly from eleven point three-eight percent in fiscal year twenty-four. To better understand the site-level data, we are going to break it down by employee group, certified versus support. Certified staff turnover for fiscal year twenty-five was eleven point five-seven percent compared to nine point eight-five percent in fiscal year twenty-four. To contextualize this figure, I reviewed available statewide data. Because official teacher turnover statistics for the past two years have not yet been released, I used the most recent statewide reporting available. According to the Oklahoma State Department of Education, the teacher turnover rate in Oklahoma for the twenty-two-twenty-three school year was twenty-four percent. And even at our highest point over the last three years, our certified turnover has not reached even half of the statewide rate, which is really something to celebrate. Our support staff turnover at the school sites was fifteen point eight percent in fiscal year twenty-five, which was a decrease from sixteen point two-two percent in fiscal year twenty-four. This continued improvement reflects increased stability and retention within our support workforce. Our non-school site departments are found towards the lower half of the data. Across non-school sites and departments, turnover mirrored the support trend at the school sites, decreasing from sixteen point two-two percent in fiscal year twenty-four to fifteen point eight percent in fiscal year twenty-five. Another noteworthy point is the growth of our regularly employed staff. In fiscal year twenty-three, we averaged eleven hundred and eighty-five employees, and in fiscal year twenty-five, that number increased by seventy-five for an average of twelve hundred and sixty employees. This increase demonstrates continued organizational growth and the ability to attract and retain talent, even as the workforce expands. And in summary, our district-wide turnover rate of thirteen point four-nine percent in fiscal year twenty-five is a strong indicator of stability and organizational health, especially when viewed alongside statewide trends. While we continue to monitor areas with slight increases, our turnover rates remain significantly below Oklahoma averages and reflect the strength of our culture and our leadership across the district. I believe this is truly worth celebrating, and we'll see more of that data in our exit survey results. Do you have any questions about the turnover data? Okay, so now for our employee exit survey results. There's a lot of data in here, and we're going to cover almost every page. But there are a few points where the increases or decreases are very, very slight, so we won't really cover those, but the others we will. So for fiscal year twenty-five, a hundred and five former employees completed our exit survey, resulting in a fifty-three percent response rate. Responses were collected through twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-nine phone interviews and seventy-six electronic submissions. So on page two, we go over contributing factors. The survey question, which items below contributed to your decision to leave Owasso Public Schools, allowed respondents to select multiple reasons. Sixty-seven percent of all selections were reasons unrelated to Owasso Public Schools, which is a steady increase from fifty-two percent in fiscal year twenty-four. And although you can't see it, it's an increase from forty-eight percent in fiscal year twenty-three. This is really encouraging for the district. It indicates that a majority of separations are driven by personal or external circumstances rather than district-related issues. On page three, the single most important reason was sixty-eight percent unrelated to the district, which is up sixty percent in fiscal year twenty-four and fifty-three percent in fiscal year twenty-three. This again signals a positive trend for the district and reflects increased organizational stability. The next highest area was other personal reasons, which was selected by twenty-six respondents. Page four, I feel like our auditor. Page four, personal reasons breakdown. Among the reasons unrelated to OPS, forty-nine percent identified personal reasons as their primary factor for leaving. This increased from thirty-eight percent in fiscal year twenty-four. This upward trend continues to show that departures are largely driven by individual life circumstances rather than workplace dissatisfaction. Supervisor awareness, this is another area I was super pleased about. Fifty-two percent stated that they did not speak with their supervisors, which is an increase from forty-six percent related to their departure prior to leaving. Post-employment plans, page six. Forty-four percent reported that they were not going to work after leaving the district, which is up from thirty-five percent in fiscal year twenty-four. Twenty-three percent indicated they planned to work in another Oklahoma school district, which is down from thirty-four percent in fiscal year twenty-four. That is a great decrease. These findings suggest that fewer employees are departing the district to work for other districts, and more really are simply exiting the workforce. On pages seven through twenty-four, there are fiscal year twenty-five-only graphs, and then combined data to show fiscal year twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-five visual comparisons. It helps illustrate trends among those years and the employee experience. So on page seven, former employees reported an increase in satisfaction across every compensation and benefits category. There is an increase across every indicator, including salary, medical dental vision insurance, teacher retirement system, and 403B options, leave benefits, and tuition reimbursement. And what I was surprised about is the most notable improvement was actually in salary satisfaction. That was the largest increase. On page eight, work environment satisfaction increased from sixty-seven percent in fiscal year twenty-four to seventy-two percent in fiscal year twenty-five. On page nine, department culture satisfaction improved significantly from sixty-two percent to seventy-five percent. On page thirteen, satisfaction and recognition increased from sixty-three percent in fiscal year twenty-four to sixty-nine percent in fiscal year twenty-five, and satisfaction with site leadership rose from sixty-two percent to sixty-nine percent. On page eighteen, supervision satisfaction increased across each data point, but most notably with respectful supervision from four point oh one in fiscal year twenty-four to four point two-three in fiscal year twenty-five, and in supervisor communication from three point nine-nine in fiscal year twenty-four to four point two-one in fiscal year twenty-five. And on page nineteen, satisfaction with training increased slightly from seventy to seventy-one percent. On page twenty, staff morale increased significantly from sixty-four percent in fiscal year twenty-four to seventy-five percent in fiscal year twenty-five. And on page twenty-one, satisfaction with advancement potential actually decreased from seventy-two percent to sixty-six percent. And I believe that this is in direct correlation with the minimal turnover we've had with our administrators. Page twenty-two shows that ninety percent of respondents said they would recommend Owasso Public Schools as an employer, an increase from eighty-two percent in fiscal year twenty-four and well above the industry benchmark of seventy-one percent. And then on page twenty, twenty-four, seventy-seven percent of respondents stated that they would be interested in returning to work at Owasso Public Schools, which is up from sixty-eight percent in fiscal year twenty-four and also above the industry benchmark of sixty-five percent. So in conclusion, overall, the fiscal year twenty-five exit survey results are highly favorable. The majority of separations were due to factors unrelated to the district, and satisfaction improved in nearly every major category, including compensation, work environment, department culture, leadership, recognition, morale, and overall organizational perception. These trends demonstrate strong internal health, effective leadership, and growing employee confidence in Owasso Public Schools. The data clearly reflects that the district continues to be a workplace where employees feel valued, supported, and willing to return. Do you have any questions about the exit survey data?
I don't have any questions, but I do just want to say thank you for, for providing all of that detail. That was very helpful and very encouraging. Very proud of that.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Need some time to think?
Lisa, I don't know if you mentioned at the beginning of the, I think there were two hundred, over two hundred people that took the survey, and you had mentioned to us that there were, there were some that took it just kind of an online survey. And I mean, every, every person that exits our district has an opportunity to be surveyed, whether by telephone or take a regular kind of digital survey. So do you want to share with the board how many did the telephone survey and how many did the digital?
Yes, so a hundred and five completed the survey. Twenty-nine people completed the phone survey, and seventy-nine completed the electronic submissions. The way that we submit our data to the third-party survey organization is all of our former certified employees, we submit with their phone numbers. The expectation is, is that they have a live exit interview via the phone. But sometimes, those individuals would prefer to complete it electronically, and if that is what their request is, we of course still want the data, and if that's the only way that they feel comfortable providing it, then we'll obtain it that way. Our support employees are simply sent the electronic version of the survey. They are not contacted via phone. So twenty-nine completed phone interviews and seventy-six completed the electronic survey. So that comes from HSD metrics. I'll find out exactly where they get that data. When we first set this relationship up, they shared all of that. Some of the data that they provide to us is geographically centered, some is national, but let me find out for you, and I'll let you know. A hundred and five answered the survey. Two hundred, the data for two hundred former employees was submitted to HSD metrics, a hundred and five of those completed the survey. For twenty twenty-five. Yes.
Okay, if it's all right, we're gonna move on since we don't have to take any action on this. And then if you have any questions or comments after the meeting, Lisa, you said you'd be available. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. All right, item B, board to consider and take possible action on a resignation agreement between the district and teacher Kelly Walters, and to authorize the board president... between the district and teacher Kelly Walters and to authorize the board president to execute the resignation agreement on behalf of the district.
We ask that you approve this resignation agreement.
I move we vote to approve the resignation agreement between the district and teacher Kelly Walters and to authorize the board president to execute the resignation agreement on behalf of the district.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
And Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Item C, board to consider and take possible action on a resignation agreement between the district and paraprofessional Jan Matthews and to authorize the board president to execute the resignation agreement on behalf of the district.
We ask that you also approve this resignation agreement.
Make a motion to approve a resignation agreement between the district and paraprofessional Jan Matthews and to authorize the board president to execute the resignation agreement on behalf of the district.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Item twelve, new business.
There is none.
And item thirteen, vote to adjourn.
A joyous motion that we adjourned.
Can I get a joyous second?
A lukewarm second.
Motion's been made and seconded, both joyously and lukewarmly. Roll call, please.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.[1716.61]